Ladies and gentlemen, all the meeting together. Microphones are on. Welcome to the Grand Rapids Public School Board of Education meeting. You can't hear me? Pardon? You can't hear me?
A little more volume.
Thank you. If you wish to address the board, there are cards in the back on each side. Just raise your hand and someone will bring them to you. You can address the board two times during the meeting. At first, it will be for those agenda items. We'd like to hear your opinions on those. And lastly, on non-agenda items or agenda items. Thank you. Please rise for the collective allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is spans one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice in all.
Mr. Ross, call the roll, please.
Mr. Ross, present. Dr. Randles?
Present.
Mr. O'Connor?
Present.
Pastor Moody. Pastor Matthias.
Oh, present. Didn't hear you.
Excuse me. Mr. Legrand.
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Here.
Miss Slate?
Here.
President of FOB, I'm present. David Quorum, seven.
We have an agenda before you. Could I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Joe Moot.
Support. Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have an agenda. Celebration Spring Hill Camp. Who do we have with us for that?
Mrs. Slate, I'd like to call Mr. Kirk Johnson up front.
Good afternoon.
It gives me great honor and pleasure to be with you on this evening to share a bit of good news and a very highly supportive relationship that we have with Spring Hill Camp. And today, I have with me a couple of camp directors and administrators, Kevin Hane, Noel Gabel, and we have one of our camp goers, Ayesha Joyner from Westwood Middle School, as well as her parents, and B. Johnson, who plays an instrumental role in making sure kids have this camp experience every year. So I have Kevin and Noel come up with me as I kind of talk through this. This is very, very briefly. Tearing up stuff here. Since I've been serving in this role.
Don't break the mic.
Since I've been serving in this role, we've had about 450 kids go to camp. And this camp is really a super nice experience. And if we had to pay for it for each student, it would have cost us almost a half million dollars. It's about $900 per student, and we send about 75 students every summer. And it was just wonderful that the camp has reached out and maintained this level of support to make sure our kids have this camping experience every year. And so we look forward to it. And you're going to hear a little bit about the camp and what takes place at the camp. And if you ever want to visit the camp while our kids are there, you know, just let me know. We can arrange that and see it up close and personal. It's really, you know, in my perspective, you know, camping, you're thinking about hiking in the woods, and you do some of that and whatnot, but it is a really, really, really nice camp experience in terms of how it's laid out and what the kids get a chance to experience there. So I will turn over to Kevin and he'll talk a little bit about the camp and our relationship with Grand Rapids Public Schools.
Yeah, to start off with, this actually started, this relationship back in 2004. In fact, it was late spring of 2004 when I was asked to join a group of people that included representatives from Cornestone, representatives from Calvin. I think it really started with Mel Atkins and his relationship with a gentleman named Wally Olson, who had a desire to do something for the public school kids here. And they were just brainstorming around, what could we do? And they were actually talking about a basketball camp. And the dates didn't line up for the colleges. And I was there and I said, hey, why don't we have them come to Spring Hill? And so we decided to go for it. And we got about 100 kids there that summer. And so actually, there's been close to 1,000 kids since 2004 that have attended Spring Hill Camps. One of the things that Mel was really excited about was that it, and the reason he didn't, you know, he preferred it not to be basketball because he wanted it to be something that the kids could experience that they normally wouldn't experience. And so when you go to the camp, now Spring Hill Camps is located about an hour and a half north of here, up in Everett, Michigan. And it's 800 acres, beautiful property, three different camp centers based upon age group. There's Storybrooke for the young kids, Copper Country for kind of middle school age, and then as you get to the high school years, early high school, you have New Frontiers. But they're all separated from each other, and the curriculum is developed to meet the needs of that particular age. But the kids are challenging, you know, there's zip lines, thousand-foot zip lines, and there's all kinds of water sports and paintball and all those types of activities. And as Kirk was saying, because I'm not really a camp guy either, I grew up in the New York City area. And when I got involved with Spring Hill, it was like, I was thinking camping, you know, dirty and tent, and certainly that takes place there. But this place, I've learned, is kind of considered to be like the Disneyland of camps. And here it is in our own backyard, just an hour and a half away from here. So I can only tell you that the kids have just had that first summer. I will say this, there were some challenges the first summer. We had to escort a few kids home. And there were some challenges that occurred with the other kids that were in the camp with them. And there was even the first year, there was some conversation about, do we want to do this? We got some complaints from parents. But we were very, we kind of pushed back against that and said, look, it's just a matter of training, it's a matter of learning how to work with blending these cultures together. And I don't think, I think it's been a number of years now since we've actually had to bring anybody home. And the kids, every fall, I know when you go back to school, they're like, when can I go again? When can I go again? So it's just been a wonderful experience, a great relationship. And as the kids have grown, it's just been just a great experience. And they've, some of them have actually graduated to some of the teen programs that they have there as well. So it's just, it's hard to believe it's been 10 years now. And I remember Teresa U coming up with Mel and seeing the kids.
Did she go on the zip line?
Did you?
Great of ice.
She was a chicken.
Twenty fourteen, we had one of them.
But the other component, and I'll let Noel speak here, that was really important, was that we wanted to have someone also that was involved in something that could kind of tag to the kids outside, you know, they have this wonderful experience, but then what happens when they go back? Noel Gabel's part of Urban Family Ministry that does tutoring, all kinds of things, events, you know, meets with kids throughout the week. And so we got her involved. And she's been critical in terms of making sure how it all, the details come together. And Noel, I'll let you speak for a minute or two.
Well, thank you guys, just again, for letting these kids go. If you could be part of the trip up there and then the trip back, you would see the difference in them, just being able to experience that week out in nature. Like Kevin said, I work at Urban Family Ministries, which is just around the corner on Eastern. And we have connections with a lot of the schools here in Grand Rapids because of what we say, our kids or my kids go to these schools. So some of the kids that we send up there, we know, I know personally. And we are able to then follow up throughout the year with them on what did you learn at camp? Are you living that? Not just, hey, did you learn how to, you know, go down the zip line? Was that fun? Great. What do you do after that? But actually putting things that they learned into practice. Did you push yourself? Set a goal at the beginning of the week? Did you reach that goal? What steps did you take to get to that goal? Those are all things that are so important for kids, especially that sixth, seventh, eighth grade, to start learning because when you get to be our age, you need to know how to do that already. So we're able to do that, and we're able to follow up with some of these kids throughout the year. We'd love, of course, for that to grow even more. We just don't have the capacity at this point to have all 100 kids, you know, that go up there with Grand Rapids Public to be able to. But we have some very deep-rooted relationships with some of those kids that go. And we're able to just follow up on a weekly basis, sometimes daily, depending on struggles that they're facing in their life or in school, you know, on how their life is going and how they can put things that they've learned at camp into practice in their daily life.
Wonderful.
I used to join them as a camp.
I'm sorry, I do have a question. Have you seen any of our kids become counselors at Spring Hill as a result of their involvement or?
There is one up there that went through, I believe it was Creston High School. I don't, I think he was too old when we first started or on the very upper end of that. And I'm not sure that he went one of those first couple of years. But it's one of the kids that I know personally who goes to Western University now, who the last two summers have been up there as a counselor.
Yeah, it would be, it'd be awesome to see our kids graduate to become counselors in the Spring Hill. I know my kids have been there, so.
Yes.
They benefit it.
It's a great goal to set and just continue to work towards that as these kids are developed every year.
And there's also a teen program where teens serve like a two-week, three-week stint. And when my daughter was up there, there was one of the kids from GRPS that was in there. And that was her dream, and she wanted to be a counselor as well.
Hi.
Good evening. My name is Ayesha Joyner. I am a former student at Westwood Middle School. I will be attending Central High School at the Health and Science Program this fall. And I had the opportunity to attend Spring Hill Camp this summer. This camp was beneficial to me because it taught me a lot about myself. I found that some activities were challenging and scary, for instance, like rock climbing and zip lining.
And zip line.
I learned that many things in life will be challenging. If I don't try, I'm defeated before I begin. The camp taught me that I can be successful in life. I will work hard during my high school years to be a leader. Challenges always come up, and I should look at it in a positive way. I would just like to say thank you to Spring Hill for this opportunity to attend this camp. The things I have learned will be useful for the rest of my life.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, we will show you just a couple of pictures of some of the students at Spring Hill. And if you have any questions about camp.
Get close to us, please.
So GRPS is a camp. And here are some of the components that are involved in some of the learning around camp, adventure, graduation, community. And students have an opportunity to come back and impact their school communities or their peers in their buildings from the skills and the lesson that they learn at camp. I've got to ask some of the basics. This is the Mud War.
Crud Wars, they call it. It's horse feet and jello all mixed together. They throw at each other.
Horse feet and jello. And that was here. We have many more pictures, but we have been at the time there. So if any of you ever want to come up to Spring Hill during the camp days, you know, let us know. And we challenge you all, to every one of you, for the zip line.
I'd rather ride the horse. Did you ride the horse?
Yeah.
How'd you like that?
It was awesome.
How fit it was. They're pretty big, aren't they?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great program. We don't have a student representative, but hopefully we'll have one in October. You searching for one? Student rep?
Yeah, we got it.
Well, we'll talk to you. I think that's the role of the vice president.
Oh, no.
Actually, she might make a good, she might make a good recruiter.
Name and address.
Ayesha Joyner. Joyner, excuse me.
Want to be one of these student reps?
That might be, we'll follow up. Name, address.
I have to put her on spot.
Would you do it?
I would do.
Wonderful. Thank you, Dr. Baker. Sign her up. Very good. Well, that's a great, that's one more task I don't have to do. Right. Public comment.
We do have one. Mr. Paul Helder.
Mr. Paul Helder, please come forward.
I get to use this.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
We'll just ask him if he wants to. Mr. Helder, would you like a reminder? Time-wise or?
I think you know me well enough to know that I'm going to need one, so.
Okay. I didn't want to assume.
All right. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. The agenda item I'd like to talk a little bit about is nepotism policy. Let me just say this for starters. Very excited about this. We've been, as an association, saying that we needed a nepotism policy for, well, six years now. And to see one come forward is great news, and I think it's going to help the district and help our students ensure that they get the best people for the best positions. Not that they weren't necessarily before that, but to open those, those lines of communication, to open the books, if you will, to show that these relationships exist and to allow that scrutiny is a big step for us with the idea of increasing transparency. So I'm really happy about that. I do have a couple of questions, and I don't want anyone to take this as a reason to, you know, vote no or whatever. I understand it's a new policy and there's going to be tweaks. As I read the policy, it asks for the relationship of all employees one with another. Presumably, well, actually, I don't want to presume. I guess I would ask, what is the reason for that? If a custodian is a cousin of a food service worker, how is that germane to the idea of nepotism? I have some ideas, but I'd like to hear. So that's one thing. I think there's some logistical concerns around going after everybody who, you know, disclose everybody who's related to everybody, 3,000 some odd people. If we're going to do that, then I would suggest when we send the policy out and the request out that we also include as an attachment a list of all of the employees, so people can go through the list and have their spouse go through the list, because it also says our spouse. Beyond that, it talks about direct supervision. It doesn't talk about indirect supervision. Maybe that can't be fixed, but it's certainly an issue. There's nothing in here about consultants. District employs a number of consultants, and certainly if one employee to another is an issue, then I think the ability of people in power to hire cousins as consultants probably also ought need to be addressed, which was a weird sentence. Under the what constitutes a relative section, this is a very comprehensive list. It looks pretty good. It says, is having an intimate relationship? I think we need to define what that means. What is an intimate relationship? I know what I think it means, but, you know, if I grew up at so-and-so's house in the summer or whatever, and, you know, is that an intimate relationship? I think probably former President Clinton would argue that he did not have an intimate relationship with someone because there were no feelings involved. What constitutes an intimate relationship? If we're going to potentially terminate people, we need to define that. That's about it. So thanks again, and I will go be seated.
Thank you.
Forgive my beep, sir. I tried to stop it prior to. No report at this time.
Thank you. Superintendent's report?
Thank you. I'd like to ask Julie Davis and Sharon Pitts to come up and address a request that I have for the board, and that is to bring back a total of 24 teachers. And it is in an effort to bring class size down before we start school. And it's really a kind of odd request at this time because our projections are right on point. We've had several experts look at it, look at the projections. But we are having a difficult time scheduling and getting the class size down to a reasonable size. We believe, I believe, and my cabinet believes, that it is in the best interest of children to bring teachers back. In doing so, though, we will need to increase the number of students in the district by about 285. We believe that we can do that, working as a team, as one entire family, really recruiting and getting students enrolled in schools, so not just on a wait list, per se, but we actually need to get students in. If, in fact, we don't, though, it would require a mid-year layoff. These 24 teachers will cost over $2 million for the entire year, and I would not ask the board to carry that amount for the entire year if, in fact, we don't get the proper number of students. So for half the year is what I would be requesting. And then that we would revisit that in December. And obviously, we would follow the GREA contract in laying people off, but it would be my hope and my intent that we get the students in. And so I'm going to ask Sharon and Julie to share additional information so that we're here to answer questions.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So just to reiterate what Superintendent Wetherald-Neale was just speaking to, if you recall, we're projected a 700 student loss for the 13, 14 school year. And really, in an effort to have a smooth opening, to ensure that we have our high-quality teachers in front of students on day one and for the ensuing months after that, for a successful implementation of our transformation plan, we feel that it's vital to look at having, you know, upwards of 24 teachers added into the system to, again, make sure that we have our high-quality teachers in front of our students from day one. We want to hit the ground running. We want our students to hit the ground running. We do not want students on day one to feel out of place because they have a substitute teacher in front of them. We just think to continue to move forward and sustain this great movement that we've been feeling over these last 18 months with this superintendent's tenure, that this is an important move for us. And as she indicated, 24 teachers would cost us a little over $2 million. If we retain them for the full year, we'd need about 285 students to break even, if you will, for the cost of those teachers.
Yes.
Good evening. Good evening. Just in case you might want to know, we have, as you know, we have 106 employees on the layoff list. We have brought back about 14 of them, recall, just during our regular process. And we are receiving, unfortunately, resignations almost every day and are having to backfill from our layoff lists, which is a good thing, that we actually have those teachers to call back because that means that'll help us have, you know, more teachers. But we still have some vacancies in some areas, Spanish and some of those smaller .2s, .4s, and that are a little bit harder to fill. But so we should be able to do that, but we do need to, we just see our trending on staffing, that it would be very helpful, at least to be able to bring people back, with the understanding that if the students don't come, the student numbers don't come in, then we would have a mid-year layoff. But that might be more preferable to some people than just sitting on layoff and not having any meaningful work to do if they can't find another full-time position. Questions? Dr. Baker?
Yeah, a couple of questions. First of all, when you say increase the number of students, you mean not lose as many as we were expecting?
That's correct.
Okay, so it isn't increase. So this would be, so, and based on what you see, it looks like we might not lose that many as we, or you're hoping that that's what happens.
We're hoping.
It is very difficult for us to commit to because with, normally with our projections at this time, and we're watching it every week, our projections are high, and then the students that actually show up for Fourth Friday, which is our count, I mean, based on Fourth Wednesday, I'm still back to the old day, but Fourth Wednesday, the number is right around the projections. And so we don't want to overcommit, but we are watching it. And starting next week, I think we're watching twice a week. And obviously, the first week of school, we meet every day at 4:00 to really watch it to balance, so.
So how does, how does this differ from, say, last year? Would we have been in the same situation and just started the year without these teachers?
Actually, yes. So last year and even previous years prior to that, we would start and wait until the first week or two of school to balance, and we would use substitute teachers. We've had as high as 40, 50 kids in a classroom, and we, the board and I, we committed that we would not do that this year. And, you know, it takes us a couple, few weeks, sometimes even five weeks, if you recall, five weeks, we still have high numbers. And you just, it isn't good. It's just not the right thing to do. And moving students three weeks after school to a new teacher is very difficult to do. And so it is our plan that we get the students in. We are doing everything we can to communicate. We're beating the pavement, calling homes and everything so that parents and teachers or students know we want you there on the first day, and it's really important. We also are really putting the information out about orientation, asking parents to come up early, and not just in high schools, but we want them to come up even in elementary so we can get a better count. It really is a moving target. It really is a moving target. But I think in order to stick with our plan of being ready on the very first day to teach, we need to make sure that we have enough people to serve.
Phil Legrand?
I'll let you go, and I might have, if you don't ask what I want to ask, I'll ask it.
I have two comments, I guess. The first is, can you give me a direct comparison of today's, you said the numbers today, the numbers today are higher historically than they wind up being on count day? Year-over-year, how does today's number compare to this number a year ago? Are we, in fact, only 400 lower than last year? Or are we the 700 lower that we had estimated would be? Year-over-year?
We are, we only went by projections. We are more than the 700, we are about the 700. Because projections are high, we roll students over.
You lost me. We're doing the same, we got the same data now that we did exactly a year ago, right? What's the, what's the difference between those two numbers?
The biggest difference is with the transformation plan, we didn't want to have the higher numbers. So we don't want a chance waiting for the first day of school to see if the kids show up. So that's one thing. And the second is, I would say, in closing schools and moving students around the district, it is our hope that students will come.
I understand, but what I'm saying is, right now, we have a certain number of students who are indicating they want to come to GRPS, correct? How does that number differ from our count at this point exactly a year ago? How many?
It doesn't. So if you look at our historical trend, where we're at this time of year as compared to a year ago, or two years ago at this time, we are running relatively close to where we have projected in those years. So, for example, if last year we had projected a 500 student loss, and you compare it as a percentage this time last year as to now, we're running about the same. I think what the superintendent is trying to say is, historically, we're looking at about the same when you compare where we're coming in at right now to our projections as a historical pattern. Our concern is the impact of our transformation plan in making sure that when students arrive, you know, we made some assumptions of, and we offered kids, and we received letters to make sure that that actually goes through, that we want to make sure we have teachers in place to service the students.
I guess maybe I'm still not making myself clear. And partly, the reason is because I don't know if you don't want to talk about the X. I mean, actual enrollment numbers last year were 17,000, give or take. If we have, say, 19,000 kids right now saying they want to come, did last year we have 19,700? I mean, my question is, what do you know right now about this dataset compared to last year's dataset at exactly this point? Are we 700 students lower or are we 400 students lower? Or are we 300?
You know, why don't we?
And Dr. Baker has a question.
Yeah, why don't, why don't I offer this as a suggestion? Why don't we put something together? And I, I hear what you're saying, you're trying to compare to, why, how is this year different than last year?
Raw numbers.
And raw numbers. And I think what, what we're trying to say is, it really isn't different. If last year we projected a 500 student loss, and where were we at in August of 2012 compared to that 500 student loss projection? We are approximately in the same place as we are with August of 2013 and our 700 student projected loss. The difference this year compared to prior years is the implementation of our transformation plan.
Might add also that we also had very overcrowded rooms in many of the buildings, given the way we staffed.
Well, that's what I was going to say. I think that another difference is, is that given that things are pretty much the same, which is what you're saying, the way we dealt with it in the past actually led to us probably losing kids. Because we had students who were in overcrowded classrooms and, plus, to some extent, there will probably be, so we, I mean, I'm, you know, hypothesizing here, but we might end up with more high school teachers than we need, but it- we we might end up with more high school teachers than we need, but it it beats having a a substitute in chemistry for a month, in which case we'll probably lose a high school teach, I mean, lose some high school students. And I think that in a way, this is just a different way to hedge to hedge the bet is that we put teachers in at the beginning. I mean, it still leads to possible problems later, but at least it means that the classrooms are hedged. Because I know, I mean, I know of a kindergarten classroom that went a month with a substitute teacher. Well, you know, kindergarten parents aren't going to stick around for a month to wait till they figure out who their kid's cla- classroom teacher is.
Mr. O'Connor?
Well, I certainly understand and appreciate and want to have all the classrooms fully staffed at the beginning of the year. I do, to Mr. Legrand's point, I mean, before, I don't want to say gambling two hundred million or two million dollars, you know, even if it's a mid-year layoff, that's approximately a million dollars. I mean, what what are the budget implications if we don't hit our projection for enrollment? And how is that going to affect us moving forward?
You're over a million if that, if if we don't hit the students enrolled, not just on the first day, it is Fourth Wednesday, you're a million over. Absolutely. And and
Excuse me.
Okay. I just want to explain, if we don't do anything, back to Mr. Legrand, your point, our projections, we're saying they're right. And so we would not bring back today twenty-five teachers. We are bringing them back in order to, we are hedging a bet. And we've we've spoken to three different experts on this, and they have assured us there is really no good way to know until students show up. And so it's either we have subs or we have overcrowding and we balance it day by day or we have extra people ready to go. An example is Union High School is scheduled to have an additional three hundred and forty students. If they show up, we don't have schedules for those students. We have now scheduled sixty students to a classroom. Or we bring back teachers, we get that number down, and we all work together as a family to get those students enrolled.
Dr. Randles?
Can I follow up on my question though? But I but I don't think my question was answered, though. I certainly, I I'm willing to spend a million dollars to have teachers in the classroom because I'd I'd much rather have lower class sizes. I just want to know what the budget, I mean, that's one, one and a half percent of our general operating fund, one million dollars.
A million dollars of our, yeah. Yeah, I would say.
Good question.
Cutting into our fund balance.
Cutting into our fund balance. If you remember, we, the budget that we adopted was to use seven and a half million dollars of our fund balance. So if we don't get the hundred and hundred and fifty students in to kind of wash the cost of these teachers.
I guess, Neil, let me rephrase this. I'm okay with spending money to have more teachers than lower classes. I I know, but I just want to know that that spending that million dollars is not going to put us in a financial pickle if it doesn't happen. That's what I want to know.
You know, we we've projected to use seven and a half million dollars fund balance and and, you know, a little over eleven point three million dollars for the fiscal year. You know, we're as, as you know, we're in the process of finalizing our two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen fiscal year. Auditors will be in here the second week after school starts. So I'll have firmer numbers on where we're actually going to land for twelve thirteen. But if I were to look at exactly what we've adopted or you've adopted as a board, we adopted that the fund balance would be about eleven point three million dollars, which is here over seven percent. So
We'd end up with about ten million dollars.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Does that help? Mr. O'Connor?
Dr. Randles?
And ten million is six percent. Okay.
Did you have anything else?
Yeah, I did. I I think having teachers come back, even though people say that it's not a smart idea, it really seems to me that it is a smart idea, that we keep doing it the old way, it doesn't work out well, we don't have student, staff, family satisfaction. And so I think we really do need to take a risk and do it the appropriate way instead of saying, okay, let's let's see what we can work out in a week and a half, two weeks. It doesn't, that doesn't make any sense. And then how are we targeting the twenty-four? Are we suspecting unions so that we're going to get some high school teachers and Palmer is going to take kindergartners or, I mean, do we have some sort of feel for that?
We do. And I I appreciate your comment because this has really been weighing very heavily on not only my mind but on the cabinet. We've played this back and forth for quite some time since we brought the original layoff. And there really is no science for this. We have to get the students in with this was declining enrollment, it's a reality. We do have a way of putting this together. We have agreed that if we bring eight elementary teachers back, eight middle and K eights and eight high school teachers, knowing that we will use that that allowance very carefully and we will still look at the enrollment, the projections and the students that we know have participated in orientation. And an example of high school, it may come in a point two or a point four, it's not a nice neat package. So it may be point four of a biology teacher or point two. And the executive directors will meet with their principals to make that decision how best to spend these, this gift.
Mr. Legrand?
Yeah, I'm, you know, I'm sorry to say it, but I don't, I don't see the analysis here. If I'm understanding this correctly, we were projected to lose eight, seven hundred students this year. And if I'm understanding the answers correctly, we are on track to lose those seven hundred students. If I understand this, this is a request to hire twenty-some, twenty-four teachers back in the hopes that we will then be able to literally cut that loss by more than a third. In other words, have two hundred and eighty kids roughly who aren't, who we don't currently have any basis for projecting will return, will come be, will come back because they're happier with their kindergarten size. Now, I'm sure we could increase, I'm sure we could stem enrollment losses by having classroom sizes of two to one. I mean, we could do, of course, if we if we reduce our classroom sizes, we're going to make people happier. The question is whether we have a reasonable analytical reason for thinking that doing this is going to produce an enrollment shift of almost three hundred children. And I don't see that analysis. That's, we're talking about spending a lot of money. And I and I and I'm I'm fully cognizant that we have had difficulties in the past, that we have had classrooms, that we have, we have had an imperfect situation in the past, and we've had substitute teachers, we've had classes that have been too large on day one and that that produces disaffection. But I am not comfortable voting to support this based on saying we hope we're going to get three hundred kids to come back. That's a big number. And and to say that, and frankly, I'm not sure that it puts these these teachers we'd hire in a very good, in a very good position either, because if we hired them all and the and the children don't materialize, then they have a six-month contract, well, they get laid off in the middle of the year and they have no opportunity to go, I mean, they're not going to find a job in some other school district halfway through the year. So I I I need to see, I honestly need to see some more analysis before I can support this. I mean, I'd like to see a lot more reason to think that we're going to pick up that many students. I'm I'm all for picking up students. I'd like to see robust strategies for doing that. I think that is the challenge for this district is to figure out how to how to stem enrollment losses. But I think that's got to be strategic, it's got to be thought out, and it's got to be planned out, and it's got to be quantified better than this for me to be willing to spend the million dollars of district money on on a move like this.
Thank you.
I was going to comment, but I'd rather just make a motion to call the vote.
Well.
You can make a motion and still debate.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you're saying, Mr. O'Connor.
Mr. Roskin, put a motion to approve this request, and we can still have debate, we should have debate once the motion's on the floor.
So you have a motion?
Okay, then.
Need someone to second that.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
She'll probably clarify the motion to second.
Thank you. The motion is to approve the call back of up to twenty-four teachers for two thousand thirteen, fourteen.
I'll second that motion.
You supported it, Mr. Baker. Dr. Baker, sorry.
And I guess I just would would clarify simply the reason I'd like to go ahead and make that motion because although I do agree with Mrs. Legrand's, I guess, hesitancy in regards to to analysis or logic or Xs and Os, I guess, just the the human side of this, again, kind of going back to Dr. Randall's comment, is that we definitely need to do something different. I definitely understand it is somewhat of a gamble. However, repeatedly, year after year, we've looked in the face of students who have been underserved at the beginning of the year, and it's really just had a really deteriorate, negative effect on student achievement. Teachers that are standing in front of overcrowded classrooms, it's definitely affecting their morale as well. And and just all in all, it's just really something that I wholeheartedly think we need to, I guess, take that gamble. And if you're talking about the productivity of a lot of innocent young young people, then I'm personally willing to take that gamble.
Thank you. Dr. Randles?
I just did want to clarify, last year, we had a projec- projected loss and we were under that projected loss. And I think that that may be, Mr. Legrand isn't aware of that history that we have had a turnaround in terms of last year, although we were staffed for the five hundred loss or whatever it was, because I can't remember the exact number. That's how in part we got ourselves in trouble. And previously, we did have anticipated loss and still our numbers were off, no matter how much analysis you guys are doing and have a feel for this. So I think that that's part of the reason why we may be at a point where we may not have as much of a loss. Again, we're going to have those students.
Absolutely correct, Dr. Randles. Dr. Baker?
Yes, actually, I was going to make that point as well. I think it's important to think that we were, we were not as far off as as the, as perhaps the three hundred, but we we certainly came in much lower than projections as my memory. And we have have come in, and that's been fairly persistent, that we've come in better than projected each year. So, which has always been nice when we do our our second budget amendment. So anyway, I I I think that there's one other issue and and Mrs. Legrand did refer to this, and I think that it's something that we should take into account, is that we haven't had a mid-year layoff vote since my first year on the board. I don't think anybody else is left to have remembered that vote. And it's pretty difficult to lay off people, especially this is Christmas time and we end up doing mid-year layoffs. And so I I'm reluctant. Now, this isn't, this is a different scenario. This is saying that, look, we're going to take a, we're going to try to hedge this and hope that it works out. And, you know, in general, I'm not someone that, I think that for the reasons that, you know, Mr. Legrand mentioned, you know, hiring people in August and then them not having a job in January is difficult. But this is a, this, again, this is, this is them making an account of the possibility that they won't have work, and they know now. And so in a way, it's, I mean, it's, it's doesn't necessarily sound as much like a mid-year layoff as if it's something that's somewhat unexpected. And this is what I would gather that this is, this is the only, at least as far as you can predict, the only perhaps needed mid-year layoff that might occur would be these twenty-four people who are already hired with the expectation that they might not be working through the whole year. Okay, so I want to make that clear because I think it's very important to establish a precedent, making it okay to do mid-year layoffs, and that's not something that I want to, I want to plan to support, so.
Thank you.
I would have liked to, I would have liked to have heard more.
Mr. O'Connor is next, and then you'll be next.
I'm struggling with the same thing Mr. Legrand's struggling with here. We, at some point last year, we had, we had a, we based our budget on the fact that we were going to be having a projected loss of five hundred students. You do your analysis all throughout the summer as students enroll, and you get to a certain point, two weeks before school starts, and you say, you know, we projected five hundred, we have a number that we know right now. It might not end up what it is the the third Wednesday or the fifth Wednesday of the of the school year, but you had a number at some point last year that you said, all right, this is, this is what it is two weeks before school starts, and this is where we ended up five weeks later. And so I would hope that you guys, and I'm sure you have done that same analysis this year, and you have to be able to analyze that trend data to say, this, this is where we're at right today, knowing that, you know, we were forty-one percent less than our five hundred projected last year. But there's, there's, there's some numbers you can correlate together there. So just tell me what that number is, and I think you'll get both of us to vote yes for it. And I know you don't want, maybe you don't want to give that up, maybe you don't want to put it, put it out there.
No, we don't have the paperwork here in front of us, but you are more than welcome to look at that. And yes, we have looked at it, not only looking at week by week, but we have looked at day by day for the last four years. We also can tell you from the second Friday to the fifth Friday to two weeks after that. I mean, so we have, we have looked at this data for the last month, yes, absolutely.
But I know it's there, but.
Absolutely, it is. It's upstairs in my office, if you want to come upstairs and see it. Absolutely. I have it, you know I have it.
So so why isn't it public knowledge?
Excuse me, just a minute. Are you finished, Mr. O'Connor?
I'm good for the moment.
So why isn't it public knowledge? I mean, why can't we talk numbers?
Because it is a working, it's a working document that we we have, that we work from. It is not for us to put up here in the public to go through. It's not in a nice neat worksheet. It's something that we work with during cabinet, after cabinet, it's numbers. Any of you are more than welcome to come to my office to look at it.
Mr. Legrand, are you finished?
Yeah, I mean, I guess my concern is.
Not, I'm not quite finished, but and that's, that's okay. That's, that's why we're here, to to look at numbers and 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 to wrestle with what what the best projections are in terms of what your team is doing and 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 to really get at the nitty gritty, especially, you know, to be able to vote on it and then, you know, be able to go out and continue to, you know, beat the ground and 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 look for these students or or look to see how the community responds to to the school, looking at those numbers and seeing the changes that are, or the positive changes that are taking place and continuing to feel like I can send my kid here. So I I I don't think it should necessarily be a secret, and I'm not implying that, but I think that we should be able to to talk about those numbers or talk about what the best projections are, you know, looking really at the elementary, middle school, high school level and saying, this is how we see these numbers falling in regards to these different school categories, elementary, middle school and so forth, high school, so that we can be able to support and go on to talk about, you know, what's what's really needed and what's best for our kids.
I assure you, they are not, it's not a secret, first of all, right? That is, I just don't operate that way. And if you would like for us to bring the numbers and do the work here in public, we're more than welcome to do that, too. We don't mind doing that. But it is not a science that you can look and take a calculator and add. Whatever you'd like for us to do, we are more than willing to do that. We can do the work here. Or you can put this off and do it in two weeks. I'm okay with that as well.
Mr. Legrand?
Really left up to you guys.
My, I I keep coming back to, I mean, at the end of the day, the board's job is oversight. And I am a numbers guy. I want to be able to see the numbers and make sure the math works. Now, you know, there's a, there in in, in the business world, there's a, there's something that everybody knows, that there's the, there's an effect of when 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 corporations project their earnings, they, all the analysts shoot low so that IBM can have a party when they beat the earnings. If you look statistically, companies on the stock market always tend to beat their earnings. So if we if we have a number here, if the seven hundred student loss is a number that we beat every year so we can have applause, and we say, look, we didn't lose seven hundred students, if we're not really, if if that's not a real number, and if and if it's an artificially suppressed number so that we can come back and beat it and and we're staffing now for the real number, but we don't want to talk about that real number, I don't want to beat around the bush like that. I'd I'd like to know, well, for example, at this point last year, how many students were we projected to lose and how many do we actually lose? I mean, if I if I knew that there was a three hundred student spread between those two numbers, I'd probably feel comfortable supporting this. But if there isn't, if there wasn't a three hundred student spread between projections and actual, then I'd like to know why it should be different this year before I support this and not just, well, we hope it'll be different. I mean, I understand that there, I understand that there's a lot of complexity here, but I also understand that there are some of some fairly clear benchmarks we can come up with. And I don't know, having, this is only my first year on the board, are we, is this projected loss number always three hundred students higher than what we come back at? And do we always have a party afterwards and say, yay, we beat the numbers? If that's what's, if that's what we're doing here, then then that's a different scenario. But if that seven hundred student loss is is a real projection, and if historically we sometimes are over it, fifty percent of the time, we're over it, fifty percent of the time, we're under it. 50% of the time, we're over it, 50% of the time, we're under it, then unless there's, unless there's a real reason to think we're gonna somehow beat that by 300, um, then I, I don't have the data to support this.
Thank you. Dr. Baker?
Uh, I want to make a statement and then ask a question, but, um, one thing I think is, is, is important here is that, um, I know that, um, I mean, what you're talking about, there has, we have become in better than projected each year. You know, I wouldn't say it was a planned strategy, but we have, and so, um, I also know, because, uh, and if you talk to teachers at schools in this district, if you talk to parents in schools in this district, they will tell you in September that their classroom sizes are, 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 you know, at bursting at the seams, or that their kid has a substitute teacher. I remember the first year the Health Science and Technology Program was open, and there was a substitute science teacher. And I was like, how, how on earth could we start a program with a substitute science teacher that's named a science center? So, um, I think that what we do know, and so this is where my, and this is why I'm willing to hedge on this million dollars, is that what we do know is that this is a different way to handle that pro- problem, that in the past, we have intentionally not staffed rooms that needed to be staffed, and we've intentionally let too many kids to be in a classroom. And I know we have lost children as a result of that, uh, and we still come in better than projected. So, and I think that in this case, um, this vote is really important, because we need five votes to pass this. And, uh, and so I'm, I'm vouching for, I think its importance is that I'd like to start a school year not hearing the stories of classrooms that are bursting at the seams. And I, and I, and I'm, I am appealing, I think it is a gamble, it's a risk that we, that we're taking. And, um, in, in this situation, and I, you know, I, I just say that, you know, it is, it's gonna end up costing, um, children an opportunity, um, and it'll cost us either that child will get another opportunity in another district, or that child won't get that opportunity. Um, and I, you know, I just, I just seen the consequences. I've seen one, um, kindergarten teacher does, being gone wreaks havoc on, on a school, especially a school when we're trying to rebuild the, um, the, the student body and trying to regain trust in it. So if you have three kindergarten classrooms, four kindergarten classrooms, and one of them is in disarray, then everyone wonders about whether or not they can send their kid there this year. And it's, you know, I think that it leads to our long-term loss. And starting with some stability, knowing that those classrooms aren't gonna be experiencing those things. And I, you know, I agree, it sounds like it's a gamble. It sounds like it's a gamble. But it's also a gamble that, to some extent, we might be able to, to handle. And perhaps we won't, I can't imagine that we're gonna, I mean, we know that there's 60 kids gonna be in, in science classes in, in, at Union High School. Well, we, that's something that we know. And so maybe we won't, um, be able to hire all, all of those teachers, or make the numbers up for all of the teachers, but we maybe make up the number for half the teachers. That's the way I look at it. My question is, is just since there is, um, since I think that this is important, and we do need to have five votes, um, to pass this, is what is the, um, what is the consequence of waiting? Um, just so we can kind of understand what it is, um, and weigh that in our decision.
We would, um, wait and have the discussion in a couple of weeks, and then I would still, based on the numbers, um, and maybe we would be more accurate at that time. And, and Mr. Legrand, I don't inflate numbers for the sake of having a party, not my style. Um, and I don't, I know for sure, last year, we did not inflate numbers as well. We just don't do that. Um, and so, we would wait and do the same thing. We still will do everything we can to get students enrolled in the seat, as many students as we possibly can. We have marketing strategies, our principals are here calling, we have people that are working on it every single day. Whether you vote for this or not, that's not going to change what we do. We are also trying to discourage our families from going to charter schools. So we're trying to stop that declining enrollment. We're gonna do that whether you vote or not. Um, what this does is allow our teachers to come back early, be a part of training, be prepared for the first day of school. And if you choose to wait two weeks, like I said, I'm okay with that too. Um, it, we will then prepare for subs to be ready to go into the classrooms. We will work with our contractors to get teachers prepared and bring them back a few days early, because we want people ready on the very first day of school. I am not okay with scheduling 60 students in a classroom at Union High School, and I know that you guys aren't either. Uh, but right now, we have 300 students, and Ryan can come up and speak to this. We have 300 students that we need to schedule. And so we would do that with subs. But it's, because it's the right thing to do, is to get those numbers down, right? And so, no, I'm, I'm finished.
Mr. Legrand?
Yeah, I, uh, first, uh, first, uh, discussion, and, and second, then I want to ask just a direct question on this. And before I get to the discussion, I didn't mean that anybody is intentionally inflating numbers. What I do mean, there are some contexts in which the downside of being wrong means you want to be cautious, right? So I get that historically, when we budget for our school district, you know, we, we usually beat our budget. Well, that's because we're cautious, because if we got it wrong the other way around, we might run out of money and wind up with an emergency financial manager, right? So there are contexts in which caution is appropriate. If this is somewhere where we cautiously project, and then we tend to historically beat that, and if that's the discussion we're having, then that's a different discussion. Then we really think we're gonna lose 700 kids, but we'd really like to not lose 300 of them, so let's staff for not losing 300 of them. That's a very different discussion than, we have to cautiously project we're gonna lose 700. Historically, we've beat that number. We think we'll beat that number this year, and here's why. That's, those are two very different discussions. So I guess, and that goes, that, that is ultimately then gonna be my question, which is, this time last year, I know we only lost 400 kid, students last year. This time last year, what was the number being used for projected loss? I'd like to know where, how, how much deviance there was between those two numbers. That's gonna be my question. But my comment is, I think to, to a certain extent, we've, we've wrapped two, two conceptual things into one discussion. The one is, do we want to have overfilled classrooms on the first day? And given our projection of 700 student loss, we should be able to stop ourselves on the first day. If we had a 700 student loss, and we ran those numbers, we wouldn't, any of us want to wind up with 40 kids in a kindergarten class. We wouldn't. And so half of this hiring is to deal with bumps around the district because of the transformation plan, because we've got, you know, a bulge in the union's, uh, science classes, and we want to, and, and we want to correct for that. And we got, uh, you know, Congress Elementary's got too big a, a kindergarten enrollment, and we've got to staff for that. That's one discussion, and that's discussed, that's based on our current projections. And so if we gotta do some staffing based on our current projections to keep our class sizes down, hallelujah, let's do it. And I agree, that's a critical part of making our system looking, look attractive. It's a, it's a critical part of student success. On the other hand, if we're staffing based on hoping to keep, hoping to pick up 300 students, that's another discussion. So I think that those two are logically separable, and I think that we're sort of voting on both of them together. And that's part of why we've got a little bit of chaos in this discussion, because those are two logically separable problems, and we're all in support of not having big kindergartens. The question is whether, unrelatedly, we think we're gonna pick up 300 children, and if so, why? So can you tell me what the difference was between last year's projected loss and, and the 400 number?
So let me describe. So last year, um, when we went through our projection process, and, um, we look at three, three different models, if you will, on where we think we're going to be. And at that time, we looked at losing, um, 400, 450 students. However, also at that same time, um, we found out a charter school was opening up in one of our, our former elementary schools. So we needed to plan on that impacting us as well. Um, so we adjusted our projected enrollment loss to 600 students. Um, so, you know, you go through your original, and you think you're where you're going to be, and then, you know, how do you plan for the impact of a new charter opening, of a charter expansion, of a, a charter changing? And, you know, this year, we're looking at, um, another one, Arlington, uh, changing and growing to a, a K-8 model. Um, so we went through the same process this year, where we looked at three different models. And not only did we do it internally this year, we also hired a third party to assist us. And our projections came in pretty close between what we have done internally and what the third party came back with. Um, and in looking at those, and, and some of that is without not having all the information for the third party. So we took that, the two different projections, looked at them, also looked at what was going on, um, in the charter area. And then that's how we arrived at a, an approximate 700 student loss.
So what you're saying is last year, we beat that, the projection at this time last year by 200 students?
Yeah, roughly.
Okay, well, that's a pretty big deal for me to know when I'm voting on this. If we beat that projection by 200, then it's not raw, wishful thinking to think that we can beat this 700 number this year. Okay?
Dr. Randalls?
I was just gonna comment that I think, uh, I agree with Dr. Baker, uh, waiting two weeks is too late in terms of, uh, coming back and approving something as well, uh, just to have teachers ready and doing training, and, um, so that we are available. And it sounds like, as this discussion continues, that we do have some numbers to justify, um, hiring or targeting these 24.
Thank you, Dr. Baker?
Yeah, just to sum it, I, I, again, that if we wait two weeks, then we're talking, then our next meeting is after the first day of school. So, first day of school, so people would have started school. And I know right now, parents are like, do you know who, you know, who, who's teaching in upper L? Because they want to know. And so if that's an issue, um, then, you know, we need to, I, I think that we need to know. People want to know, and the teachers need to get prepared. And we, so we know for sure there will be substitutes starting the classroom, starting the school year off, if we don't vote on this tonight. And, um, you know, so these numbers, I mean, I, I'm hopeful about the numbers, and, you know, because of the way they tend to, they have tended to come out. But, um, I just think it's something that we can't, we can't really afford not to, not to do this. I just think that we end up not doing education well if we don't do this. And I think it's, I'm glad that we're, we're looking at the problem, addressing it this way, um, for a change, so, anyway. And I, it also seems like we might still not be 100% sure two, two weeks from now anyway. You know, we're still gonna be trying to figure things out and, uh, where things are. And so, you know, we know we're gonna have overcrowded classrooms if we don't do this. So, um, I'm, I'm in support of doing it and voting tonight, so.
We have a motion on the floor. Is there any other comments prior to, any, should we call for the motion?
Uh, Mr. Ross, yes. Dr. Randalls?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Uh, Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Legrand?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Uh, motion passes 7-0.
Thank you very much. Thank you for all the comments. We discussed that quite a bit. That's good. Difficult issue. Very difficult issue. Okay, do you have anything more to report?
No, not at this time. Thank you. Thank you for the discussion, though.
It's a good discussion.
Great discussion.
Okay, action items. We have purchasing?
Motion to approve the purchasing agenda.
Support. Support. Dr. Randalls called a question?
Uh, discuss, discussion.
Correct, discussion. I knew I could count on you, Jim. He's such, he's so good with that.
I just, quick question, I'm wondering if any of the contractors for the, uh, parking lot qualified for, no, okay. Thank you, Ken.
I'm sorry, I didn't even hear the question.
I just wondered if any of the contractors for the paving of the Kennosha Elementary School could qualify for the, uh, local purchasing policy? It's out of curiosity.
Thank you.
And they're not related to our president?
Yeah, I was just gonna say that. Have we checked that through?
Any other questions? All righty.
Uh, Mr. Ross, yes. Dr. Randalls?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Uh, Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Legrand?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Slade?
Yes.
A purchasing motion, 7-0.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the policy, 5420, the nepotism policy, our second reading and final adoption.
Motion to approve the, uh, second reading of the, uh, nepotism policy.
Support, anyone?
Support.
Support, support. Mr. Legrand, thank you.
I'd just like to say, it's, it's great, so I'm really glad that we're, we're doing this, so, um, thanks for the people that wrote it.
Yes, and discussing it, I think, um, I also would like to say, it's about time that this district has a nepotism policy. So put all that to rest, and we can go forward. Mr. Legrand?
Um, yeah, I, I wanted to address the points that, uh, Mr. Holder made, at least from my perspective, and I think it's appropriate to discuss them all. Uh, first, uh, and these aren't in, I don't think they're in the order he raised them in, but there's an old, um, Supreme Court, uh, line, which is, you know it when you see it. And I think that, uh, that's gonna work fine for the intimate relationship clause. The, uh, I don't, I don't think we have to worry about who was, who was having sleepovers at whose houses when they were eight years old. I think that, uh, what an intimate relationship is, is pretty clear, pretty clear. And, you know, if someone wants to litigate that, uh, after, after a layoff, we can work, we can burn that bridge when we come to it. Um, as far as the consultant thing, I don't think it's appropriate to include that in the, uh, in the nepotism policy, simply because, otherwise, where does that end? I mean, is the person that, that, uh, is gonna do the, the new parking lot, are they in fact related to somebody? I mean, if, you know, is, is there somebody that consumers power, who's providing us with our light, who's related to somebody who works for this, for the board? I mean, at some point, employment means employment, and consultant, there is a difference in the relationship. And you can't absolutely get rid of all connections between everyone in the world. Um, I think it's an appropriate line to draw at employment. Um, I do think, um, that the idea, Mr. Holder's idea of public, of making a list available is an excellent one. I think we should certainly do that, uh, because we certainly don't want to trap anybody with, uh, who finds out that they've got a, who didn't know they had a cousin working in the janitorial, uh, department at a school. Um, and, uh, I wrote down the word indirect, I don't know what that was about, but the, um, the other thing that-
Supervision.
Uh, right, the indirect supervision. Um, you know, again, I think that, I think that at some point, you have to draw rational lines. Otherwise, um, uh, there are, there are, you know, Superintendent Neal presumably has an indirect supervision over every single person in the school system. Uh, and whoever's directly, I don't know if John Helmhold directly indirectly supervises everybody in, in, in the school system, or if Julie does, um, I think that we can, again, direct is a good line to hold, and it's a good line to define. And we don't want, we don't want to make this a policy that no one can comply with. That's, you know, it's important to have policies be clear. It's also, uh, important to have policies that people can actually work with. Um, the final thing, the final thought is, and, and I, I certainly think we should approve this and approve it as written now, uh, with the changes we made. But I do think that at some point down the road, we ought to also, um, hold the board accountable. And I think that it'd be worth writing some kind of language to amend this down the road. We don't have to stop this process, but I don't think there's any reason why board members, uh, shouldn't, uh, why we shouldn't have some kind of disclosure of, of, uh, board member, uh, employee relationships too. Is it in there?
I, I believe that's in there. I recall it, because I know that I immediately registered that I have a son in the district.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay, well, then good.
Second paragraph. Mr. Legrand? Are there any other?
And just to Mr. Legrand's point, there is, in the policy, it's written that there is a list available of all current employees available through the Human Resources Department.
Thank you.
So everyone knows.
Mr. Ross, yes. Dr. Randalls?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Uh, Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Legrand?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
We have a consent agenda. And I have a motion to approve.
So, most.
Support?
Support.
Okay.
Mr. Ross, yes. Dr. Randalls?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Legrand?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Consent is in the passes, 7-0.
Thank you. There are no discussion items. Public comment for non-agenda items or agenda items. I think we amended that at our last meeting.
Uh, we do have two, uh, Ms. Louise Wilson and Mr. Paul Holder.
Okay, would you please both come up? Thank you. Would you like a one-minute warning?
No, it's really short. Look, it's just this. I'm proud. Um, I know you've missed me, because I was away at various teacher things, and when I was listening, I- I was listening, I realized that sometimes we forget to say thank you. So I am at, um, uh, Innovation Central, and Spectrum Health is once again sponsoring our summer experience for students. We've just started that this week, and so I think sometimes we forget to say thank you, so I think we should say thank you. And I also was catching up on all the things that I missed over the summer, and I'm absolutely excited that we are back to being the Academy of Health, Commerce, Science and Technology, because for those of us in science, there's a huge difference between health and science and technology and health science. So thank you for that. But really, what I noticed in the last couple of weeks, there's been a lot of, um, things in your write-ups about ecology. Um, four years ago, I was, I went to City, and there's a big emphasis on ecology, and I actually do research, and I look things up, and I found there's something called the Auspen, which is a refillable whiteboard marker. I am not paid for, I'm not paid by these people, I, I get nothing from them. I have been using the same set of markers for four years, they're refillable markers. It's probably saved me $120 over the last four years. So I'm sorry, I don't have exact numbers, I don't have receipts, but I'm just, I was back there going, "Mmm, well, what is it? Okay." Um, and that's just one teacher. Um, they are, in, instead of being a plastic thing which has xylene in it, which is bad for the environment, and you throw away the plastic thing, it's a metal tube, it's got an insert, you buy, it comes with ink, and it's the, the ink and the, and the pens together were $50, they're on sale this year, this week for $40, but I, it doesn't help me, 'cause I already bought mine. Um, but you refill, you refill the marker. You can get new nibs for it if you like, if they come in six colors. My daughter just started working at Spectrum Health, I said, "Get these, try and put them in," because if we really do care about the ecology, somebody's got to do something. And we use thousands of these whiteboard markers, and I'm just suggesting, for the long term, I know it's not gonna affect your purchasing this month, but for the long term, you might be willing to look at it. That's Auspen, A-U-S-P-E-N. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's very helpful. Appreciate your comment.
I'm back.
You're back.
Good evening again. Uh, let me just say, uh, in response to Mr. Legrand, thank you. Uh, it's nice to have people answer questions. That's, that's a big help. Um, the policy says that a list exists of the other employees and is available for review through the HR department. Uh, my concern is that if we've got 3,000 people all trying to contact HR to review that list, that becomes problematic. Why can't we just send the list as an attachment? That's all. Um, beyond that, uh, I, I did not see the 24 teachers return to, to work item here on the agenda. Had I, I would have spoken earlier, uh, maybe made some of that a little easier. A couple of weeks ago, I suggested at a, a meeting that you already know about, uh, to the district, that we look at a three-tier approach to returning people, a plan to return people to work. Tier one was, in fact, to create what other districts who do this call a surplus of teaching staff. Um, it, it's no secret, uh, that every year, projections are wrong. It's, it's not that it's easy to do, but, but they're wrong, and they're usually low. Uh, you know, so there's always that wiggle in there. So if anyone's going home tonight, all concerned about this, they probably don't have to. The other big component, I will say, is that we already know every year, the budget is off by between $6 and $13 million in the district's favor, so the expenditure of, of $1 million, maybe not the end of the universe. Um, what I, I didn't hear a ton of, although I heard some, uh, is numbers around how many students we lose every year, uh, between that second Friday and that fifth Friday, or the couple of Fridays after that, because we don't have the proper numbers, because class sizes are at 60, because, uh, you know, we've got a, a sub-teaching chemistry. Um, this was a big step, and, and it's out there a little bit, and, uh, certainly, on behalf of the association, I, I appreciate your willingness to take a look at this and give this a try. Uh, I think, I think it's gonna help us. Um, you know, uh, as far as, as the numbers and everything like that, I'd like to see those, too. Um, but, uh, you know, sometimes, I guess, maybe you've got the stuff put together, and you're at the crunch hour, and you just didn't have time to, to put it out there, or whatever it is. Um, I guess beyond that, uh, I would ask, uh, for a list of the 24 teachers that we are targeting to return. Uh, there's a, a couple of, of issues around grievance that's been filed for counselors around some, uh, some Tenure Act violations that the association's filed, uh, for some members who, who maybe should have been recalled and weren't. Uh, if they're on that 24 list, we can withdraw some of those. That's my thinking, so, um, and then I'll, I guess I'll talk to you about two, tier